Thursday, September 24th, and we're meeting on Thursday due to Yom Kippur this week. I hope everyone who observes had a toneful-
And an easy fast.
An easy fast, and hopefully we're all written into the book of life. Anyone have any announcements?
I do.
Nancy, Selectman Daley.
Well, I think some of you have heard, I am doing Dancing with the- the Rotary Club's Dancing with the Stars this year, which the actual event is in November, and I'm hoping to see all of you there. But tomorrow night, I have a pre-event fundraiser, because I have this big fundraising goal to meet, so- and this one should be really fun. We're having a sock hop at the senior center, and I'm inviting everyone in the TV audience, as well as everyone who's here. And we're having a disc jockey, we're gonna have 50s and 60s music, snacks, fun, so come and dance the night away. Seven o'clock tomorrow night.
And bring your checkbook.
Yeah, and bring your checkbook, yeah. So it's- but tomorrow night's event is $30 is the ticket price, 25 for seniors, and we're gonna let kids in for free. So it should be- should be fun. I hope to see- see many people there.
Okay, and of course, this weekend was Brookline Day. It was a lot of fun.
It was excellent, yeah.
I saw many of you there, and it was a successful event, once again.
I can report to you that at least my grandchildren enjoyed it very much.
Including your grandchild, who was in the katab.
Yes, she was.
Well, it was- it was a very good event, and I will say, one of the nice things was that our various town departments that had tables there were- had lots of visitors. So people were interested in learning more about different tables, including our Diversity Commission had a table, and they were talking to a lot of people, so it was- it was good.
Okay, moving along. We don't have anyone signed up for public comment, so we'll move on to the miscellaneous calendar. And the first item is the approval of the minutes for the September 17th meeting. I have one very small change. Anyone else?
I didn't find anything.
So I will move acceptance of the minutes as amended. All those in favor? Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Moving right along, Item B, the question of approving and executing a contract amendment in the amount of $16,400 with Civic Moxie LLC in connection with the Brookline School Site Identification Study. I'll just state before we start here, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Bruton, we're hoping to make a public presentation about this study on October 22nd. So there's going to be a lot of activity building up to that, but that should be when we- we present it to the public. So Ms. Bruton.
So my name's Cara Bruton, I'm the Economic Development Director for the town in the Planning Department, and we've been working with school staff, building staff, park staff, I think just about everybody in Town Hall on this ninth elementary school study. We got started back in January with Civic Moxie, Susan Silberberg, and as you said, Neil, her work is wrapping up. There's been several executive session meetings. We're asking for an increase of her contract of $16,000 to cover the kind of the next phase of public rollout, public participation meetings, as well as to get her to be able to finish the report reflecting, doing detailed analysis of a couple additional sites.
Any questions from the board? Therefore, I'll move approval and authority to execute a contract amendment in the amount of $16,400 with Civic Moxie LLC in connection with the Brookline School Site Identification Study. All those in favor say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item is C, the question of extending a contract between the town and the Massachusetts Department of Transportation for Clean Air Mobility, grant funds to be used for operations and other related costs associated with the Brookline Bike Share Program, more commonly known as Hubway, and I'll speak to that. And this actually is just a technical amendment of the contract. There's no new funds. It allows us to spend the money into the next fiscal year and keep Hubway up and running. So we have some unexpended funds, and this is necessary just so we can keep the program on track. Any questions?
I'll ask a more general question about this.
Yeah.
I believe we appointed a committee to help you out in sort of visioning the next step for Hubway.
Right.
I'm wondering if you can get an update on-
The committee met, and has actually been a little dormant for the last three or four months, because Hubway, the operator of Hubway has changed, the ownership of the operator has changed, and the operator is looking into changing the operating model to more of a private model, which is the same or very similar to what's going on in New York, which is kind of the core, it's the largest system that they operate. So there- and until that shakes out, there's not a lot to talk about. We're kind of on automatic pilot right now. We can't really think about expanding, and until- until we know what the model's going to be, and hopefully that'll happen soon. There've been some kinks in trying to get all the municipalities on board. You know, it's- it's- Hubway is actually an interesting governing model, where you have four municipalities owning the bikes and owning the docking stations, yet it's run as a regional system. So each of the four municipalities has their own say and has their own way of doing things, and has their own decision-making process and their own interests, and we're the smallest of the bunch. So we're kind of, in many respects, at the mercy of the other municipalities to a degree. So that's a long-winded explanation, probably more than you wanted.
No, no, it's-
There you have it.
It's good.
Yeah, and just an FYI, because you might want to take a look to see how they run things. There's a big system in London. There are like the stations all over the place with tons of bikes.
Yeah, and there's a big system in Paris.
So I don't know how they-
One of the other things that they do in some of these larger systems is there's a lot of partnership between the operator of the system and institutions who may sponsor a station, and I think that's something that we may want to explore as a means to expand the availability of Hubway bikes.
Right, and in the Hubway system, in Cambridge, for example, I know Harvard and MIT are partners with the city of Cambridge. You know, we don't have, you know, quite that institutional presence, but we do have commercial interests.
We have a lot of institutional presence.
We do have.
More than we sometimes like.
And both Boston and Cambridge are correct, they're academic institutions that partner in the LMA, I believe Masco, sort of the-
Right.
-group that takes care of and advocates on behalf of the hospitals and the academic centers there, is intimately involved with Masco, with Hubway, excuse me. So I think- I think that something we should explore and continue to pursue is the Hubway system sort of shakes out a little bit.
Right, no, I agree. Okay, so I'm going to move that we authorize the extension of a contract between the town and the Massachusetts Department of Transportation for Clean Air Mobility, CAM front, grant funds to be used for the operations and other related costs associated with the Brookline Bike Share Program, more commonly known as Hubway. All those in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
I'd like to abstain, because I just walked in, and I apologize for that.
That's fair. And Chair votes aye. Moving on to Item D, question of approving the application of Taberna DeHaro Inc., DBA Taberna DeHaro, Deborah Hansen Manager, holder of an all kinds alcoholic beverage license as a common victular at 999 Beacon Street, for the appointment of Jonathan Bonomo as an alternate manager. The application appears to be in order. I don't think there's any need, unless representatives of Taberna DeHaro are here, I don't see any, I don't think there's any need for them to speak to this. Everything appears to be in order, and then the police find no reason to deny-
Well, there was one issue the police brought out. He had not yet taken, he was registered for, but hadn't yet taken his in-person tips course. So maybe we should make his-
Do we want to make it conditional?
Conditional on.
Okay, so I will move approval of the application of Taberna DeHaro Inc., DBA Taberna DeHaro, Deborah Hansen Manager, holder of an all kinds alcoholic beverage license as a common victular at 999 Beacon Street, for the appointment of Jonathan Bonomo as alternate manager conditioned upon the successful completion of the in-person tips.
Yeah, or I think we should say alcohol service class.
And submission of documentation.
And submission of documentation. Got that, Kate? All those in favor? Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. And the next item is E, question of approving the application of Gitc Retail Enterprises Inc., LLC, DBA pantry holder of a wine and malt beverage package store license as a food vendor, for the appointment of the following as alternate managers, Rachel Koplman, Sarah Karobi, Kelsey Munger Elufson, Daniel Snedeker, and Emily Schwartz. And we have the same situation. The applications look to be in order, and all have been certified in the Safe Service of Alcohol in the imperson- in course.
Yes, I will say this was a very highly educated group-
Yes.
-alternate managers.
I don't think there was anyone below a PhD candidate. So I'll move the question of approving the applications of Gitc Retail Enterprises LLC, DBA pantry holder of a wine and malt package store license as a food vendor at 1622, that's Beacon Street, for the appointment of the following as alternate managers, Rachel Koplman, Sarah Karobi, Kelsey Munger Elufson, Daniel Snedeker, and Emily Schwartz. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. So I- we're moving on to our regular calendar, and Item 5 is postponed, and we'll be hearing that next week. So now we have a public hearing on the petition of NASD LLC for a waiver of the noise bylaw for the period of Columbus Day weekend, beginning Friday, October 9th, at 7:00 PM, and running through the morning of Monday, October 12th, at 7:00 AM, in connection with the demolition of the Washington Street overpass, and that is the pedestrian footbridge. And this is the second, well, this is the first public hearing. We heard last week a presentation from the DPW team about the demolition with the focus on general impacts, the media plan, detours of this very important, high-impact project, which I think is really going to affect the entire region. And I'll just reiterate that for those of you who are watching and you have an opportunity not to be in the area with a car, and that's the- that's the Brookline Village, Washington Street overpass area, that for Columbus Day weekend, it was probably best to seek alternate routes and stay away as much as you can. So there's going to be some noise impacts, which we're going to hear about tonight, which require a waiver of our noise bylaw. So that's- that's the purpose of tonight's public hearing. So Mr. Ditto.
Good evening. As stated, this is a request for a waiver of the town's noise bylaw, and it was precipitated by the fact that we're gonna shut down Route 9, and would like to work uninhibited for that period from Friday to Monday. We do have my staff here, as well as a representative from NASD, who is the contractor on this job. What I'd like to do with the board's permission is just to sidetrack here for about five minutes to update the board on what we've accomplished in this last week, on Thursday. So that being said, I'm gonna have Steve King give you some information on what we've accomplished this past week.
Sure. Mr. King, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I would just like to go over a few of the updates and status of where we're at today, and also address some of the concerns that you had from last week. Hopefully I'll be able to catch up with the, basically the notifications and concerns that the residents had, who brought up at the last part of the meeting, before we concluded the presentation. Just a brief outline of what I'll be talking about before NASD comes up to talk about their means and methods for the demolition.
Could you just speak a little bit louder?
Sure. Sorry about that. Let's go over three brief things. I would like to talk about more of the public outreach, how we've gone out to the neighborhoods, communities, and local businesses, hospitals, and residents, and let them know more about the project and the status, and when it's gonna take effect, how they can bypass the construction site during the- during the weekend of Columbus Day, and also to let the widespread region know that surrounding towns, both Newton, West Roxbury, and Boston, the communities of Boston, to inform them of what was upcoming in the next few weeks. And then I'll take about, talk briefly about the demolition of the, our status update, where we're at today, and then I'll let Mr. Colin O'Hern, who's representing NASD tonight, talk about more about the actual demolition. We've updated the Brookline Town webpage to include everything that we've posted online, and all the detours and presentations that we've done today. So now, if you go to the website, you can directly see that we put up the pamphlet that we've been passing out to the residents on Juniper Street, and the Brook House, and the local businesses. You also see on that website, you'll have emails and contact numbers from myself and Mr. William Smith, who, if anybody has any questions regarding the project, we're well aware of what's going on, and we can give anybody an update of the status. Also, important dates and events are included on there, as well as the detour maps that we showed on the presentation, and also, we actually adjusted some of them after our meetings with the DOT, the Massachusetts State Highway Department. So all those changes are updated as of yesterday, and we'll continually update them throughout the next few weeks as we get closer to the actual deadline, the Columbus Day weekend. We've also worked on doing a press release, so we're intending to get all that out by tomorrow. We started sending emails to local newspapers, television stations, and radio stations. So I think by the end of tomorrow, all the agencies for news, TV, and radios will have a full update of where, what's gonna be taking place on Columbus Day weekend, as far as the road closure, the detours, and the overall demolition and construction. I'd also like to talk about the, we did reach out to the Brookline Housing Authority, and we were able to put together a community meeting last night at High Street, and we had several residents come and voice their concerns, and also their questions regarding the project. We were, I believe, we were successfully able to answer a lot of their questions. We got some good feedback from the residents regarding how the detours were set up, and what they liked to see as far as police presence and signage, and just an overall notification of what's going on during the whole construction project. We've also, I also, whoever wasn't able to make it, I've sent out emails to the Brook House and Juniper Gardens residents with their contacts, and they plan on also forwarding my email on to all their residents, tenants, and homeowners, to make sure that they weren't able to make the meeting last night. They have everything that we talked about. So today, we actually got started on a lot of the prep work for the demolition. Two of the main parts were removing the current traffic signals, signs and lights that are attached to the bridge. So we contracted with the Dago Electrical Construction Corporation. They were on-site today. They took off all the traffic signals that were collect, that were on the bridge, relocated them to poles. Any of the light poles that are in the way for the demolition were removed and relighted as necessary. And we also had Northern Tree Services on-site, along with our DPW departments, to help prune a couple of trees in preparation for the demolition taking place over the next week. We intend for the contractors to be still tree pruning, and continue with some electrical work and signal relocation over the next couple of days, up until the 28th. I believe, the next week item was the message boards and notification. We're gonna start having message boards delivered on-site tomorrow. We're roughly getting, we're getting six message boards, with a seventh that'll come later on next week. Real-take traffic system is subcontracted through NASD, so they'll be setting up the message boards, all the detours and signage that is gonna be referenced with the bridge construction.
Can I, can I ask though, I mean, that one, that one, your example says bridge work a half a mile, but when you actually get to the time, shouldn't it say road closed?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
We'll have two variable messages going, one before the bridge starts, bridge demolition starts, and one during the bridge demolition.
Okay.
So you'll see that on the, at the locations coming up next. So tomorrow, we're intending to try and get five message boards up, letting people know that demo, road closure is pending, and to seek alternate route for the date of 10/9 through 10/12. The locations will be at Washington Street and Brookline Avenue, Washington Street at River Road, Washington Street at High Street, High Street at Walnut Street, and Washington Street at near White Place. So we're intending to capture everybody coming from the north, south, east, and west, from any location that they'd actually have to cross over through the bridge. And that would be up until the actual road closure. Before the actual road closure next, we'll have at least seven message boards on-site, flashing road closed ahead, please seek alternate route. Those will be at Brookline Avenue. We're intending to put two spots at, in Boston, in the Museum of Fine Arts, so people coming westbound can either take a right on the Longwood, or they can get off at the Jamaica Way before they hit the actual Washington Street road closure. We're also intending to put some on Washington Street and Harvard Street for people coming in from the Alston-Brighton area, and the Brookline Village, as well as Beacon Street. And then we're also gonna set up several more along Route 9 on the westbound side. So if you're coming eastbound, you'll see one at Reservoir Road, so you'll know that you can take a, you can seek an alternate route using Chestnut Hill Ave. Or if you want to continue down, there'll be another message board at Warren Street, where you can take a left onto Cypress before you hit the road construction.
That seems to have covered a lot of the concerns we had last week, so that's good. Thank you.
Lastly, is, we'd like to just, just request for the noise, for the waiver for the noise bylaw. Mr. Colin O'Hern will come up and speak a little bit about the means and methods of how he plans to do the work. I'll also all assist if any questions come up regarding why we chose to do this method of road closure. We're asking for a full road closure from October 9th at 9:00 PM to October 12th at 7:00 AM over the Columbus Day weekend. This is basically for a continued 24-hour operation through the night, and this is the reason for this, is to demolish and dispose of the existing pedestrian bridge. I've also put in with your packets a demolition sequence, so you can see the type of equipment and location that will be on-site for the road closure, and also a second attachment where we've done a model test of the noises that people might hear at decibel levels as they get closer to the construction site or overnight when they're working. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Colin O'Hern from NASD, who's a project manager.
Good evening. My name's Colin O'Hern, I'm the project manager for NASD. We'll be doing the demolition of this project. So as Steve said, what we're looking to do first is to demolish the ramp structure, the existing ramp structure on the, is that the west side of, south side? So we can use that as a staging area. So we'll demo that ramp during the week after we abate the asbestos next week, so the fall week, we'll demo that ramp, and we'll have all that area to take all that concrete, get it all out there, we'll have a place to store the excavators, because we only need about six excavators to do the demolition over the weekend. So once the actual weekend comes around on Friday, it was probably gonna take two to three hours, do traffic control, do a full closure, everything we need to do to have it in place. So like Steve said, the VMS board will be there, we'll put signs up, everything it takes to close the road. So once we do have the road closed, and the reason why we're here tonight is we want to start demolition immediately. The faster we can start demolition and get this bridge on the ground, the faster we can get the road reopened. As of right now, we're trying, we're trying to say we're gonna be done on Monday. I think it's a high possibility we could be done on Sunday, even Saturday night, if everything goes according to plan. So if we can get in there early and start demolition right off the bat, and work through the night, I know we can get this down, at least get half of Route 9 open, if not the complete Route 9 back open to, for use, so.
That's a very clear graphic.
It's tough to see, but there is, it shows where the different locations of where the excavators are gonna be, when it comes to doing the work. We'll have excavators located eastbound, westbound, Route 9, as well as the ramp with the buses pulling two now. Most of this work is gonna be with mechanical means. I don't know if you guys know, like a concrete pulverizer on a machine, it doesn't actually make noise like a, like an impact hammer does, it's just a, just a loud crunching noise. The loudest noise is probably gonna be the actual excavator tracking back and forth on the roadway. There is some impact to do at the piers. Once we do get the piers down, we have to go two feet below grade with those, so that's the only time there'll really be a lot of impact. Most of the time, it's gonna be just the excavator moving around. That's gonna be the loudest noise that's gonna be heard, and the backup alarms on the excavator. I mean, other than that, it's gonna be pretty straightforward, nothing crazy as far as noise All right, so this is something that we've done in the past. We're actually doing the demolition on the Bayonne Bridge in Staten Island, and it's a very high-noise area, so we've worked with the FHWA and their modeling, and this is something that came from the Big Dig, and it gives you an idea, I know you guys can't probably see, but it gives you an idea of what kind of equipment makes what kind of decibel limits, and the loudest, it's probably gonna be as about a 90 decibel, and a 50-foot to 100-foot range as far as the closest noise center, I mean, where Brookline Housing would be, would probably be the worst-case scenario. So like I said before, there's not gonna be a lot of impact equipment, it's gonna mostly be the excavator tracking back and forth, so we shouldn't exceed the 90 decibels throughout the night at all.
And give me a sense of what 90 decibels sounds like.
90 decibels? I was just looking through your bylaw, is this the same sound as a truck passing by? So it's not, it's not gonna be-
A big truck or a-
Like a big truck, yeah, like an 18-wheeler.
Okay. So a significant amount of noise.
It is, but like I said, I mean, the faster we can get this, this on the ground, we can open the roadway back up, and we can minimize the noise over the weekend. So if we can, we can work all through Friday night into Saturday, and we can finish, worst-case scenario, work Saturday night, but we're not gonna probably have to work Sunday night and have the road back open, everybody, for Columbus Day.
Yeah, out of, just as a frame of reference, according to the place I landed on the internet, so it has to be true, a train whistle at 500 feet or truck traffic is 90 decibels. City traffic inside a car is 85 decibels, so that's kind of the, the range.
So I know you mentioned that the majority of the noise was gonna be the excavators' equipment- equipment moving around, sort of backing up. I wonder if there's been any consideration to quieting the backup alarms and sort of going with the same approach that they did on the BU Bridge, where they had flashing lights instead of, instead of the beeping?
Yeah, it's a possibility, that they have other noise mitigation on top of that besides that can, like a scrubber sound, that makes a different noise instead of the actual backup alarm. We can look into that, or we can just disable the backup alarms. I mean, if no one's around, there really isn't a need for a backup alarm, it's mostly for people that are working around the area, so it's all going to be excavators, we really don't need to have backup alarms, so it's something we can do.
Well, as long as you're not going to violate OSHA rules.
No.
Yeah, I don't want you to run anyone over.
No, not really.
But I, I, you know, I think maybe if, if you're allowed to make them quieter, because that, that is kind of something that might wake up the people.
Yeah.
Nearby.
That's definitely, yeah, we can definitely do that.
How about noise muffling technology? Are there any of those options?
Not, not so much. I mean, the backup alarm, we can muffle that, and that's, that's pretty much the extent of what we can muffle. Everything else is going to be the actual excavator tracking back and forth, making the noise on the pavement kind of thing, you know what I mean? So that's pretty much all we can do, is the backup alarm muffle that. That, that really is the loudest of, of everything, making that noise.
And those backups, backup alarms are very annoying.
Yeah, exactly.
Beep, beep.
Well, they're meant to be, so people don't get in the way. But I mean, you're, you're own employees, we don't want you to-
I know, but this is mostly an equipment-driven operation for me.
Oh, okay.
I mean, it's most, the only labors I'm going to have on site are going to be guys on water hoses for dust mitigation.
Okay.
So they'll, they'll know what to beat out of the way.
Okay.
Okay.
I do, I see Mr. Maloney is here, and I do have a question about, I assume that the Health Department has looked at dust, and you mentioned asbestos, and I want to hear from our Health Department as to whether you're happy with what arrangements have been made and whether you feel it's safe for nearby residents.
I'm Patrick Maloney, the Assistant Director of Public Health and Chief of Environmental Health. Pleasure to meet the board for the first time. As was mentioned, we had a meeting last night, and I think it was very productive, a lot of good questions from the citizens, so I know that was suggested by the board, and it was, it was good, it got the word out. The engineering staff has really worked with us, listened to all of our concerns. In Brookline, if you're going to demolish anything, we have a lengthy checklist of, of things that the Health Department wants to see. Asbestos, dust control, roading control, and all of those are being implemented as part of this project. So we're, we're comfortable that everybody's been doing what we've asked of them, but in addition, we're going to have our inspectional staff keep an eye on things to make sure it's in compliance, but we're, we're pleased with that. And in addition, engineering has acquired a third-party supervisor to see that things are complied with, so we have excellent supervision. The communication link looks great, so I, I think, you know, condensing everything for three days is, is going to be fantastic too, so, but we're pleased at the Health Department that we've done everything we can to address hazardous materials and nuisance conditions as best we can.
So for instance, if there was someone living nearby with emphysema, you don't think they're going to have any problem?
The measures that they have to take, as, as the gentleman from the construction company, they're required to be wetting down surfaces to keep those particulates down. And if not, if we see any plumes, we stop the job until it can be controlled, so.
Wow, so you guys are going to be there in the middle of the night?
Well, I know DPW staff and their, who they have as a third-party supervisor, they know what we're looking for.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
Great, thank you.
Any questions from the board? Do you have anything else that, okay. This is a public hearing, is there any member of the public who wishes to speak or have any questions? Okay, I don't, I don't see any, so are we ready for a motion?
Yeah, can I just, can I just say that I really appreciate the way our, our guys in the DPW picked up on all of our suggestions last week and took care of them. Thank you.
Very impressive, thank you. Okay, therefore, I'm going to move approval of the petition of NASDI LLC for a waiver of the noise bylaw for the period of Columbus Day weekend beginning Friday, October 9th at 7:00 PM, running through the morning of Monday, October 12th, 2015, at 7:00 AM, in connection with the demolition of the Washington Street overpass, the pedestrian footbridge in the village. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Despite the fact that the sundial is going to be taken away, I'll vote aye.
Okay, and the chair votes aye.
You can go out there with a piece of chalk afterward and draw on anyone.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, now we have some board and commission interviews. First up, if she's here, is Gretchen Stoddard for the Advisory Council on Public Health. Welcome. This is quite a switch. A little different than talking about bridge demolition. So welcome, and why don't you tell us about yourself and what brings you, what attracts you to this position and what you hope to accomplish?
Sure, thanks very much, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. So, my name is Gretchen Stoddard. I completed my Masters of Public Health at Boston University School of Public Health, where I met Alan Balsam, he was one of my professors, and he was the one who initially got me very interested in Brookline Public Health. As a resident of Brookline, I was interested to hear about some of the issues and initiatives that, you know, really are at the forefront of public health, and Brookline has been a great example for Massachusetts and the US, actually. So, once I graduated with the MPH a few years ago, I started working at a Boston-based Global Health Foundation, where I serve as the Program Director. So there, my time is actually spent all on global health initiatives, a wide variety of issues in Africa and Latin America. And so I've been eager to find ways to be involved in the local public health initiatives and within my community. So I was actually here a couple of, about, almost two years ago, applying for the same position, but it wasn't necessarily open at that time. But the advice you gave me at that time was to stay interested and to stay involved, and so I did work with Alan, I became a board member for the Friends of Brookline Public Health, so I've been more involved through Friends of Brookline. I've been talking with Don Seabor about joining the Brookline Medical Reserve Corps, and just been more involved in, in Brookline in general. So now I am back, applying again to be part of the Advisory Council on Public Health. Alan has been very encouraging and helpful in, in keeping me excited about continuing to do this. So that's why I'm here, I'm very interested in being a part of the public health in Brookline and offering my, you know, experience and my views as a young professional, part of the demographic of the young professionals of Brookline.
That's great. We actually, it's, it's interesting, because we tend not to get young professionals, and I, I think it's, it's great, given that it's such a large demographic in the town. Does anyone have any questions?
Selectman Daley, I will defer seniority here.
Yeah, just on the Friends, I wondered what, if there's been any couple, one or two particular issues that you've been focusing on?
Yes, so I helped contribute with the Brookline Public Health Policy Forum, and I've been learning a little bit more about the Sister City Project, as well as I represented the Friends of Brookline Public Health at the Massachusetts Department of Public Health Annual Meeting.
Great.
I'll now ask a question, I'll take, take my turn back.
Okay, go for it.
So one of the biggest trends that we hear about in, in the media related to public health is the opiate crisis in, in the state. I think we're all aware that we've seen a rash of overdoses, overdoses in Massachusetts. I think there were 1,500 overdoses, fatal overdoses in 2014, and it's, it's a problem on the South Coast, certainly in and around Boston and, and Western Massachusetts. So I'm wondering if you can comment a little bit about what you think we can do better in Brookline to address opiate addiction, what we're doing well, just generally speak about this topical trend in public health.
Yeah, so I actually don't know too much about the trends in Brookline related to the opiate addiction, but I know that Massachusetts, again, has, in general, has been a leader. I was recently at, for Azumi Foundation, I was at an Association of Foundation meeting where Governor Baker spoke about this and his exceptional lead in this area. So I think, like I said, I don't know all of the details of what Brookline has been doing in these efforts, but I think it's, it's something that we definitely need to pay attention to, and I think Brookline as a leader in public health initiatives should be, again, leading the way, saying this is what we can do, this is what we are doing, this is what we're doing to prevent this issue from becoming worse, and this is looking across all ages, especially with our adolescent population and, and above.
Selectman Heller?
You mentioned that you had represented the Friends of the Massachusetts Annual Health, I don't know what the rest of it, well, Health Forum?
Yeah, their annual meeting.
And I'm wondering what kinds of issues across the Commonwealth are percolating in terms of health, and what do we need to pay attention to here?
Yeah, they actually spoke, well, on, on many various activities, but they had a few different speakers, talking specifically about issues related to adolescents, and also maternal and child health programs, especially looking at the vulnerable popul, the young preschool, under five, but kind of the, also primary school-aged children in, in Massachusetts. So I think that's something that we can continue to be paying attention to. Obviously, public health is intended to care for all of the citizens, especially the most vulnerable in the community, and so I think we can continue to look at those issues, especially around adolescents and, and young children.
I just wanted to let you know that we appreciate the way you've gotten involved with the Friends, and there, there is one opening now, and four people have applied for them, and all very, one in particular, I remember being outstandingly well-qualified, but in general, quite well-qualified. So, don't get discouraged if this isn't your time, because there is, I know, going to be a second slot opening up in the next couple of months, so just.
Right, and we're not going to be voting tonight.
Yes.
So you'll hear from us coming weeks.
All right, great, thank you so much for the opportunity.
Well, thank you for your interest in, in applying.
Continued interest, yeah.
Yeah, and continuing to, to work in this area for us.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Peter McDonald, is Peter McDonald here? Ah, for the Arts Commission. Mr. McDonald, welcome. Why don't you tell us about yourself and what your interests are, and why you're interested in joining the Arts Commission?
Well, my interest is art. I, I went to art school back in the 70s, and I've had a long career in marketing and advertising since then, but I've always kept my art side going. And a number of years ago, probably about 12 years ago, my wife and I moved here to Brookline from Boston, and I've always wanted to give back to the community, and I give back in a number of different ways. I, I volunteered down at the Brookline Interactive Group, currently doing a series on Brookline artists for their, you know, coming up programming and, and actually probably will be starting in January. And it's just, you know, I've always followed open studios, and I just felt that this was, you know, this was the time for me to start getting more involved at a different level than I have in the past with the Arts Commission.
Do you have any particular interests that you'd like to bring to the commission?
Well, one of the things is, that I do look at is, is that a number of the other surrounding communities, and I'll say, you know, Jamaica Plain, going as far as Somerville, you know, they do a unbelievable job of promoting their art scene. And I think that, you know, my, my talents in, in marketing and my background and my interest in the arts can help Brookline get up to that level. You know, everybody's doing an absolute wonderful job right now. I mean, you know, the difference between Jamaica Plain and here when it comes to open studios, Jamaica Plain has full-time paid employees, you know, here it's much more of a volunteer organization, but I do think that we just have so much to offer that we can compete with absolutely anybody, and I'd love to see Brookline become looked upon as an arts destination, which will just help all, everything from local business to local artists.
So we talk a lot about in this town visual arts, painting and sculpture and printmaking and jewelry-making and the like. We don't talk a whole lot about the, the performing arts, music, theater, and I'm wondering if you can comment a little bit specifically about performing arts as opposed to visual arts?
Well, being a printmaker, I certainly am into, you know, that, that end of the arts. You know, again, that is, you know, it's, it's all wrapped up together. There are performing, performance groups here, there is also, you know, the music school. Again, I think all of that just needs to be really kind of tied together under one umbrella, rather than, you know, like you say, the music school working on their own, you know, trying to promote their concerts, their series, and everything else, and I think there's just a lot of synergy that can happen between all of those groups.
Any other questions?
No, I, I like that last idea, though, you know, when, on times when they're having open studios, it might be great to have, you be able to stop in at the music school and hear some music as you're moving from one location to another. It's good.
There's another member of the Arts Commission that's very interested in sort of creating some more energy and buzz around the arts community in Brookline outside of open studios, so, Leah Cohen, the founder of the Coolidge Corner Arts Festival, so there's a little bit of activity, and I think you and Leah and I think everybody who's involved can amp that up a little bit and, and further draw attention to the arts community in Brookline, so, thanks for the application.
Sure. This is a commission that actually has term limits, and we have one, two, three, four folks who are being term limited out.
There's plenty of space.
Yeah. So the chance-
Wait, wait, what is a term limit?
Was it two?
I think it's two consecutive terms.
So six years.
Six years total, but then, when there's a break, you can then come back on.
Okay.
So if you, you don't get enough in the first two terms, just wait a little while. Well, we're not going to be voting tonight, so you'll hear from us in the coming weeks, and I thank you for your interest, and I think the chances are pretty good.
Okay, well, thank you and have a good night.
Okay, thank you. And our last interview tonight is Jim Carroll for the Park and Rec Recreation Commission. I see Mr. Carroll in the back. And you've been on the Park and Rec now for how long?
You know, I was trying to think about that before I came up here, that's how long, it must be 10 years anyway.
Wow, and you, and you want to re-up?
I do, I love it.
Tell us what's been going on and what your interests are and-
Well, you know, I think my, my big involvement, probably in my last term, has been the Fisher Hill Park renovation. That was a, you know, a big project, and I was on the review committee for that, and I, I basically led all the meetings as well, so I had a lot of involvement in that. I think it's just a crown jewel in, in Brookline's crown. It's just amazing what that park is looking like. And so, you know, I've been on a lot of design review committees and just staying involved and attending the meetings, and I just love the repartee and, you know, being part of Brookline, it's just, it's really got my civic pride going, you know, just being involved. Brookline, it's just, it's really got my civic pride going, you know, just being involved.
Yeah, I think the parks are in great shape, and there's some projects in the pipeline, too. Do any of those interest you particularly?
Yeah, there's a couple that just came on, and I'm not, you know, actually, the last meeting I was assigned to, and it wasn't Summit Hill, there was another one coming up, was a smaller park renovation, and I'll be, you know, on that, but I'm also on the Boylston Street Park Project, just finished up the Warren Field. But then, you know, aside from the park, there's a recreation department, too, which really is so exciting to be a part of that. I think our leadership between Erin and Lisa are just, you know, over the moon, you know, what they do, and, you know, the development of the golf course, and they're always pushing the envelope, they're never satisfied with, you know, just being who we are, it's just always being better, and really being a leader, you know, nationwide, you know, with all, you know, a lot of initiatives, with, you know, the concussion seminar that Lisa ran at Gillette Stadium last year, and just, just an amazing group of people, you know, to be associated with.
I've got to ask, since you put in on your application that you'd been on the Skateboard Park Task Force, and I was thinking about it, and I remember some kids who were in my son's class in high school, coming when they were sort of 15 or 16, to talk about Skateboard Park. This is back when I was on the advisory committee. So my son is now 31.
Yeah, that was a while ago.
So that was, that was a while ago. And, you know, as far as I know, we haven't really made a lot of skateboard progress.
No, we've made none, but I'm proud to say I voted for them every single time. They really came forward, and they were very involved, and made a lot of great presentations, and I thought they deserved a shot, you know, even if it was a little element in a park, you know, I thought that we could fit in something for them, but, you know, just a, you know, not my backyard situation with skateboarders, just, we just couldn't...
So it wasn't the liability concern, it was, or injury concern, it was noise?
Noise and nuisance, I mean, it was just a, you know, a real, you know, disregard for skateboarders in general, and so, you know, it didn't really matter, you know, just no matter what they came up with, you know.
I do, I do remember when people, the girls' crew team wanted to row at the reservoir, and the neighbors objected to that, and I thought, come on, how noisy can that be for people rowing? So...
But, you know, I'm always interested, you know, anybody that comes in front of the commission, if they've got an idea, they want, you know, an initiative, I'm always willing to listen. I think, you know, the whole commission really is, is very good at that. John Bain's a great listener, and, you know, lets people participate, and try and, you know, get everybody involved as much as possible in the Parks and Recreation Department of Brookline.
Well, we appreciate your patience.
Selectman Franco?
I'm going to follow Selectman Daley's lead in dragging issue that we've been talking about forever out for public discussion. One of the things that, a perennial concern is that our fields, our parks, are very heavily used, and one of the ways that we've extended the life of fields is by installing artificial turf. There's been a healthy conversation in this community about whether artificial turf is the right way to go. We're approaching the point where the Clark Field at, or the Kraft Field at Haraldson's Field, is getting ready for redo.
Really? It's been that long?
It's coming up in the next three or four years, I think.
Wow.
So I'm wondering what the commission's current thinking is on artificial turf, and where we are with possible installation of additional artificial turf fields.
Yeah, that was one of the first major commission, you know, design review committees that I was on, was when we actually installed the artificial field. There was a ton of discussion, you know, with the health concerns about that, you know, the crushed tire particulate, you know, the heat of the field from the sun with the black particulate, and it's a, I mean, the MERSA effect from, you know, scraping their knees on the artificial turf, and there was a lot of health concerns there, and I think Alan Balson, you know, really did a great job, and then Joe Zeller, too. Joe Geller, I'm sorry, Joe Geller was involved, and, you know, he donated all his time and designed for that, and, you know, so it was a real heavy process, you know, in the parking issue that came up, you know, right around Downs Field, so it was a very, you know, heavily involved community in that. But I think we, we really passed muster to, you know, to approve that type of field for use in Brookline. I think in terms of, you know, having fields available for use, and the upkeep and the maintenance of them, the artificial turf, I think, has been invaluable for Brookline. I can't imagine, you know, without, you know, the limited numbers of fields that we have that are artificial turf, we'd be in a lot worse shape. So I think the, the idea is that we're going to continue with that and do whatever repairs. I don't think we have to do a full remediation. I think the drainage system and the subgrade is still intact, so it's really a matter of perhaps just replacing a carpet on that. So we've already begun discussions on that.
Actually, I had the same, similar question to Selectman Franco. I know that one of my neighbors, Dr. Nguyen Armand, is from Mass General Hospital, has been concerned about the crumb rubber portion of the artificial turf, because of the fact that it sticks to the kids, their clothing, it's made of, you know, materials from tires which are really toxic, and the question is, what's the long-term health? And we don't know the answer to that, and Dr. Balson has sent us a memo saying that at this point, there is no hard evidence that these things are dangerous, but I'm wondering, what are the other alternatives besides that crumb stuff?
I think there's a cork fill that can be used for that, but I think it's extremely expensive, so it really is a budgetary issue, in terms of, you know, if we had to go in that direction, we just wouldn't have the funding to do that. So I, you know, I think that, you know, I know that Lisa, you know, paredos keeps up with all of the, the new developments, the research, whatever's been done, you know, for the fields, and then the artificial turf, and the health concerns about that, she's right on top of that. So, you know, we're always open for new information, you know, new studies that come up, but right now, you know, it seems to have passed muster, and that right now, there's really no evidence that it does create long-term health concerns. That's not to say that, you know, who knows what long-term is, you know, is it 20, 30 years? But, you know, it's been around for quite a while now, and I don't think that's been any studies that have shown that, you know, the people that participate on that type of field have shown any, you know, adverse health effects. Just hasn't been proven yet.
Thank you.
But it's a legitimate concern, you know, I think that, you know, anytime it's artificial, and people play on it, and, you know, it's a concern, for sure.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Mr. Carroll, for your service.
Thank you very much.
And we're not going to vote tonight, but you'll hear from us.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Okay, moving right along. Now turning to warrant articles, and the first one up is Article Two, collective bargaining agreements. I don't think we have any, or do we?
Sandra DeBeau, Human Resources Director, we do not currently have any. We have sat down with AFSCME, we have ground rules. There is, you know, sometimes labor miracles, and there might be time for them to sign and go to a town meeting, but at this point, we don't have anything going forward.
Okay, so I think this is an easy no-action motion, and if there is a so-called, as you put it, labor miracle, we can always reconsider. So I'm going to move a recommendation of no action on Article Two. All those in favor? Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Oh, that was supposed to be a public hearing?
Oh, is there a member of the public who wishes to speak to the fact that we don't have any collective bargaining agreements? No, I don't think so. Thank you for the technical correction. Article Seven, I don't see the petitioners here, so why don't we, and then I don't see the petitioners here for Article Eight.
I know with Article Eight, is there another hearing going on, Melissa? So unfortunately, the petitioners are asked to be in two places, so I was expecting Eight to be delayed, I don't know about Seven.
Can I ask you, Mr. Kleckner?
Yes.
Because we discussed and last week voted Ms. DeBeau's plan...
Yes.
...to give our workers, part-time workers, both sick days and personal days, that actually seem to be probably better, certainly as good as the state law that this is asking us to accept. So we voted to go ahead with that, so that would start immediately. But there was a question about the schools, and I wondered if you were going to convey, I think, to the schools...
I have.
...that we had passed something to take care of our part-time workers, and did you get any response from them, or...
Yes, well, I have, we actually spoke to them even while we were developing our plan, so we, they were aware, and I spoke to the superintendent again today, and they are actively looking at it. I think they're, you know, they have to look at what elements of their workforce that they might want to exempt, for example, perhaps coaches, or these just daily substitutes, but I believe that they are going to come up with a proposal with similar benefits that we have offered, or the board has adopted, but for a limited number of personnel, I really can't say much more than that, but I believe that they will adopt some similar treatment for certain part-time personnel in their department. I don't know their personnel as much as I know in town departments, so I can't speak more than that.
I mean, because if the schools get on board with having a plan for their part-time workers, then I would see no reason to accept the state law, because our plan is better than the state.
Yeah, I agree. I, I would like to hear from the petitioners, or give the petitioners an opportunity to address us on this.
Well, we did hear from them last time.
We did, and one of the things that we asked them at the close of the hearing last week was what their reaction was to the argument about the impact of state law on collective bargaining agreements. So I'm particularly interested to hear their current thinking on that.
Yeah, because that was one of the problems, is not only did the plan Ms. DeBeau put forward to us that we adopted really take care of our part-time workers, I think, slightly better than the state law, but it also served to not undermine the long-term collectively bargained agreements that we have with many of the workers who are already covered, which this adoption of this law would kind of pull the rug out from under, so...
So I'm going to suggest we hold, not do a vote tonight on this, and we give the petitioners one more opportunity to...
Okay. This is a public hearing?
Ah, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would wish to speak on this?
This is accepting the provisions of Section 148(c) of Chapter 149 of the Massachusetts General Law, is the earned sick time law.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I agree that the adoption of the state law would be bad for us, but the petitioner last time did have some questions, some of which were somewhat vague, and I was wondering if we could make at least an attempt to get the information that she was asking for.
What were the questions?
I would have to look through...
Well, some of the questions I thought were unreasonable, and some of the questions I thought were valid. There was one, you know, a list of all employees who would now be getting sick leave.
Yeah, I know, we certainly cannot provide a list of names of employees, I think, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong...
All I'm asking is that we respond to the questions that were posed.
Yeah, we're in the process, I don't know, Sandra, if you had gone to address the status...
I mean, if we, if we wanted to talk in terms of number of employees or categories, but I don't think we can provide a list of...
No, I'm not asking that.
Specific names, okay.
I'm just saying we should respond to that, those requests, even if it means saying that we can't respond because it's inappropriate.
Yeah, okay.
So, yes, we are preparing a list. I think that there's a lot of identifying information we cannot give out. I think we can give out the information definitely in the aggregate. I think giving information in the aggregate is not necessarily going to satisfy them, but I think that there are ways that we can present the information at the same time preserving, you know, the identifying information of the various personnel.
Yeah.
One of the things that we're looking, I remember they specifically asked about interns, and so one of the things we're looking at is who's actively working now and who isn't, because there's a process of putting people on and off payroll, and, so we're just looking at the numbers, but we should have something relatively soon.
Do most interns, though, have, you may not even know this, because they probably have contracts with, specifically with different departments, but, you know, if they have a contract to work X number of hours, and they say, "I'm sick today," or "I'm working on my dissertation," or something like that, "so I can't come in," they would simply work those hours another time.
Right, and so that's why we're asking to exempt interns, because, and if you look at the law, that, you know, there's an exemption for students who are actively in an educational program. And so if they're, if they're enrolled in school and doing this to augment their education, you know, they're not really actual hours worked. We do give them a certain amount of pay, but as you say, I mean, we can, we can tie it to hours, but it's not necessarily...
Well, I think, I think that's an interesting piece of information, and we should certainly track, whatever you provide publicly, if we're talking about interns, you should note that the law would not cover interns who are in active educational programs in any case. So in other words...
Well, this is where it gets tricky, you know, so how we describe an intern is the same exact thing as what the law is stating, but I mean, yes, certainly we can provide that. I mean, like I said, we tried to mirror the law, but right now, we just want to make sure that the information we're giving is accurate. I think that they were in part concerned about who these interns were. We are actually aware of who the interns are across the town, and we do treat them similarly. So I think there won't be a problem compiling that information.
Well, I mean, I think I know who some of them are. There's social work interns at the senior center, there's health department interns at the health department, the police department has the northeastern co-op students, so, all the ones I know of are active students.
Okay, so any other questions or comments on Article Seven? We're going to hold this one, and Melissa, were you successful in getting ahold of Janice Kahn?
So Janice is the chair of the Public Safety Committee, and they're in the thick of leaf blowers downstairs in the first floor.
Okay, so I think we're gonna...
They'll be there for the fall.
Yeah, I think we're going to be adjourned before they are.
I think so.
So, okay. And I don't see Mel, Elise, or Ruth Ann Schneider here to talk about 18 either.
No, but I will note on 18, and I, we had a very interesting memo in response to Bernard's request from town council, because there is a sort of problem with setting quotas, and I think that if you haven't seen it already, it came in the email, and it's something everyone should take a look at before we vote on that.
Yeah, I'm not sure that the bylaws can be reasonably construed as setting quotas. I think it's badly written and a little confused, but, I mean, we do have the option of, you know, trying to focus it in a way that is both legal as well as useful.
Yeah, I want to say, I mean, certainly, the idea that we continue to work on our networking outreach is important, and I want to say a little bit of congratulations, I think, are in order to Sandra and to everyone, because I'm already seeing a change, and I know Austin in our own office up here on the sixth floor, Patty Correa, who was promoted to be... Patty Correa, who was promoted to be assistant, first assistant town council, is Hispanic. The classes we've seen in the last few classes from both police and fire, I think, have been far more diverse than classes, you know, I saw when I was first on the board, for instance, 10 years ago. So, I think we're making strides. But, yeah, I, I wouldn't, if we could rewrite this to reflect our continuing commitment to, to keep diversifying, that, that would be acceptable, I think. I don't, I don't like the way it's written either.
I would be remiss if I didn't also voice the sense, or my feeling, that, that diversity exists beyond racial and ethnic categories.
It does. And we were very careful in the bylaw to talk about, I mean, they, the, people with disabilities, for instance, transgender. There's, there's a number of different categories that aren't mentioned in here.
And I only bring it up because this particular resolution is focused on, I think it mentions African-American, Latino and Asian and other people of color. And I just want to underscore the fact that we strive for diversity in all sorts of ways beyond just, in the words of the resolution, black, Latino, Asian and other people of color.
If I may add, I think that is true, but I think it's also very important not to lose sight of the fact that we do want to increase the racial diversity of our, of our workforce. And by depending on how we state it, adding all the other categories could sort of dilute that focus. I know that's, you know, what you're suggesting and I think that, you know, the broader diversity is incredibly important and enriching for the town. But, you know, we just have to, you know, phrase it in such a way that's, that we're clear as to what we're, what we're trying to do. And, yeah, I agree. I mean, the way the article's written now, for example, my group, you know, African-Americans would be really disadvantaged, because we're 3.4% of the population here in Brookline. And currently, in terms of our aggregate numbers of workforce, of the workforce, black workers are about 5%. So, we'd have to, we need some people that are to comply with this, with this bylaw.
Yeah, I will notice, I, I said many times to people when we were working on the bylaw, Asians are the group that are, there's like 17% of the population of the town and very underrepresented in our, among our town employees. So, yeah, that was-
And boards of commission, boards and commissions.
Yeah.
You know, I think general involvement in, in Brookline town government is, is lacking for-
Right. And I think it also skews older than our general population.
Well, I'm doing my best to bring it down.
So, I, I'm going to suggest that we hold this one, too. Hopefully, it can be improved upon. And if it's not improved upon, I would be inclined to recommend no action. But I think there are ways this can be improved upon to get it to the point where it's something that I think I can certainly support. But I, you know, I-
Did you want us to ask if anyone wants to?
Is there anyone who wishes to speak to Article, what's, what's the article number?
18.
18? I don't see anyone.
Okay.
So, I think we're, we're done. So, with that, I'm going to adjourn on tonight's meeting.
That's what we like to see, Mr. Chairman.